I would like to call the Fairfield County Council Regular Meeting to order. Winsborough, South Carolina, Monday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one, at six o'clock P. M. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved the agenda and a discussion.
Yes, Chairman Bill, I make a motion that we table the third reading of the redistricting to give citizens and council members more time to provide input on the redistricting.
I second that.
Um, a minute, um, has been moved in second that we amend the agenda to give, um, citizen, um, more time to, um, to discuss the third and final reading of the redistricting. Um, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Um, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So look like it's, um, well, that's five two or five, okay, five two.
Can we get a hand count, please?
Okay, we, we just need a hand count on the last one, then you see. All, all oppose. Okay, it's five. Okay, we're back to the original motion. Um, any, any discussion? All in favor of the agenda as, as outlined, um, let it be known by I.
Aye.
Pose is nay.
Nay.
So let the record show five two. Um, invocation, Councilman Paul.
Let us pray. We pray for everyone here tonight. We pray for Fairfield County and we pray for our nation. We also pray for everyone in Kentucky affected by the terrible storms in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Um, item four, approval of the minutes, regular meeting, November twenty second, twenty twenty one, can we get?
So movement, Jim.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose is nay. Let the record show seven zero. Public presentation, non. First public, um, comment, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. We have several persons signed up to speak. The first one is John A. Jones.
John A. Jones, District Four.
Is mic.
You need to get the mic.
Microphone?
Testing, testing. What I'd like to bring to the forefront of everybody's mind is the manner in which the redistricting has come about. It almost seems like it was attempted to be slid by us so that before we could actually do anything, it's passed. Too bad, hey, it's passed, it's, you know, it's over. And it pretty much is that way anyhow. All you have to do now is just vote on that final, that final hearing, boom, it's passed. That's not the way it's supposed to be done. As servants of the people that put you in office, they deserve to know what it is you're doing. You're not doing that. You're not doing that. And each day that we have one of these meetings, there's more and more people here. Pretty soon, we're not going to be able to breathe, they're going to be shoulder to shoulder because you're not doing the public's will and not letting them know what you're doing. They're getting angry. Don't do that. As our servants, we had trust in you to put you in these positions. And we're losing that trust rapidly. Stop. Take a breath. An excellent example with the, well, the redistricting, you got a chance now. First reading by, by an ordinance for Fairfield County to approve an intergovernment agreement? What are you talking about? Let us know. We put you in those seats. You know what that means. As your employer, you have a responsibility to let us know what the Sam Hill you're doing. Elsewise, anger ensues, and I guarantee you that little glint you see in the corner of your eye, that's the demarcation line. Those of you that are coming up for reelection, it'll be a rough day. Stop it. We had trust in you once. Help us get that trust back in you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Stedham?
Good evening. Um, y'all all have a letter in your packet from the elections office. I'm going to switch gears from what y'all been talking about for just a second, if that's okay. Um, and I know you've hopefully all read the letter that we sent to have put in your pack, and if you hadn't, I would appreciate at some point that you would read over it. And, um, I know that y'all have had a lot of calls concerning the bonus that you gave to the county employees. And we were not even going to come tonight because of illness in my home and in Jackie's home, but our poll workers are here, a few of our poll workers here tonight to speak to you guys, and I felt like they put their lives on the line for elections to take place in this county. So that's the least that Jackie and myself could do is to come up here and speak to you quickly concerning, uh, the bonus money that was given, which I understand it was given to county employees. Um, our poll workers, and I do understand that the money is for twenty twenty one. We did have an election in twenty twenty one, which was the municipal election. And if you have the letter that we sent for your packet, um, for that municipal election, we voted seven hundred and some work, uh, voters that day. That's a lot of people in a few hours' time that our poll workers were exposed. And also, one other thing I do want to point out to you that I do understand that that funding, that you cannot pay our poll workers out of that funding, and I do appreciate y'all voting to pay our poll workers that extra money. Um, in twenty twenty, we received grant funding from the C T C L. We were able to buy P P E and equipment for our office. We also asked to pay our poll workers a bonus in twenty twenty because of all the elections that they worked throughout the pandemic. We were one of the few counties in South Carolina that did not have to have the people from National Guard to come in and take place of poll workers who were afraid to work during a pandemic. We didn't have to ask for anybody because our poll workers came out and ran the elections for Fairfield County under those circumstances, and they did it again in twenty twenty one for the municipal election, which we do for the town of Winsborough. Um, but the C T C L grant money that we received in twenty twenty, we asked to be able to pay our poll workers a bonus out of that money. That was what that money was earmarked for and to be able to purchase P P E for our equipment and for our workers. Uh, the previous administration told us we could not do that, pay our poll workers a bonus because none of the other county employees were receiving one, and they didn't feel that that would be proper. So we were unable to pay our poll workers a bonus in twenty twenty. We did give them a little extra money from the state, which was fifteen dollars for Election Day. So what we're asking is that you please just consider another source to, even just for our poll workers that worked that municipal election. Thank you. And if you have any questions about the letter that is in your packet, y'all know where we are, please give us a call, we would love to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Um, thank you.
Jackie Beaver?
Good afternoon. I just want to reiterate what Debbie spoke on and to give y'all a little more details about what our workers actually do. In twenty twenty, I know this money isn't about twenty twenty, but just to give you an idea of what kind of sacrifice they put themselves in, um, for voting, um, rights in this county. In twenty twenty, we voted twelve thousand two hundred and twenty seven people, fifty three hundred of those were in person absentee. We had voters that came in that had COVID, that were coming from the E R with their wristbands on, going to quarantine, and they were voting before they went home. We had voters that intentionally coughed. We could not mandate them to wear masks, even though there was a mask mandate in our office, we could not do that under no circumstances. So we put ourselves at risk just so that everyone could exercise their right to vote. In twenty seventeen, the voter registration office was deemed critical infrastructure by our federal government alongside all of the noted safety sensitive departments. We assumed that we were going to be included when the coroner's office and the sheriff's office presented themselves before council, but we weren't. We could, like, as I stated before, we couldn't require voters to wear the masks despite the mandates. We did not have special equipment as displayed by the other departments to you when they presented themselves to you. Um, our, our employees, our workers were subjected to intimidating and harassing tactics. We had people that came from out of town that were in our office constantly during a pandemic alongside the regular political distractions that we get. We had to try to take what equipment we had, the few masks, the things that we had, and try to protect ourselves and also allow our voters the right to vote. Um, during the municipal election, like Debbie said, it was seven hundred and thirty four ballots that were cast in that election alone. It's safe to assume that the number of individuals we had direct contact with in this time period comes second to that of EMS and of the Sheriff's Department, if it did not surpass that in one day. We understand that this money may not come from A R P that she's asking for, as she stated, but surely monies can be allocated from another source for this cause. Our petition to you guys is this, is just to reconsider all of our poll workers for compensation, but if not all, by your own standards set and pan to other workers that were deemed critical, um, that were deemed, uh, essential as needed, like our firefighters, at least pay these sixteen workers that worked with us in elections in twenty twenty one. It's only fair because you promised it. Thank you.
Tony Crosby?
Because out of all nights, I left my glasses at home, so I had to borrow some glasses. Um, good afternoon. My name is Tony Crosby Walker, and I'm here to represent, um, the Fairfield County, um, poll workers. Um, we as the poll workers understand that the money you received was just, excuse me, received was just for twenty twenty one. However, we want to explain that there were appro- approximately sixteen of us who worked in twenty twenty one in the town of Winsborough election. In twenty twenty, many of us who are here tonight worked thirty days in the absentee precincts at the height of the COVID, both the primary and the general election. We had people coughing intentionally, people refusing to wear masks. Patients that was coming from the hospital or the doctor's office with wristbands that was, um, being taken home to quarantine. We could, we couldn't make voters wear masks. We didn't have the best P P E. We are all adjusting. We understand how important our elections are, and we all risked our lives for the lives of our family. So we hear vote, we, so that every voter that wanted to vote in the Fairfield County election had an opportunity to. Many of us would do it all over again if we had to. We find, we were informed in, in a form of training that we are considered as critical infrastructure, essential workers. So we are asking that y'all please reconsider the bonus, and thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Schaefer?
I'm a little confused tonight. This is the ordinance portion, correct? That's who I'm speaking on right now? Okay. So, uh, tonight you had the first reading by title only of number seven eighty three in the ordinance to approve a lease of real property located in North Monticello and Laird Road by the county from Dominion Energy Company for the purpose of establishing a public recreation area. There has been no discussion, no news, no nothing about this for years, ever since they built the recreation hall on, um, two fifteen, right across the street from the sidewalk to nowhere, which no one uses. We have a recreation facility that hardly anyone uses, and now we're talking about establishing another public recreation area. What specifically might you be wanting to establish there? Um, I'll direct that to you, Mr. Tim Roseborough. Do you have an answer for that? Have you been involved in that? Because when I ask about what's going on on our side, there's nothing. I get nothing, you respond to nothing. Um, frustrating, you know, that we, we live here, we ask for certain things, tax money goes out, and we don't see anything changing, nothing. I know people live here their whole life, seventy five, a hundred years, and they tell me the same thing, nothing has changed, nada. Why is that? Why can't we get together here and just say, look, we're going to devote some money, and we're going to do something specific, especially in, in the Dawkins area, um, establishing a public recreation? Why can't we be specific and say, this is what we want to establish? What's so difficult about putting that in an ordinance so we can all understand it? Um, I'm going to contain myself and be polite tonight. Wish you all a Merry Christmas. I'm going to have a seat, I'll be back.
Thank you.
Randy Bright?
Jeff's always a tough act to follow. Randy Bright, District One, for now. I agree with the two, Jeff and John, we still have that opportunities in our ordinances, our first reading particularly, and often second reading. We offer little detail, little to none detail, but we do offer the minimum. I don't think we should be reaching for the minimum. I think we should embrace reaching for the maximum, maximum information for both council and the citizens. And in these instances, there are so many questions that I know won't be answered, maybe not even asked. And let's look at the, the, on B, the ordinance on the agreement with Ridgeway for code enforcement. Is that going to involve another code officer that we didn't include in the budget? Are we going to match codes up with Ridgeway? Why are we doing this? I understand synergy. However, I don't understand mixing codes. I don't understand, are we going to supply a code officer for them when we shorted code officers in the last budget? So what's going on there? But we have no detail again. And then on the, on the property for, uh, the recreation center, I've been asking for years, ever since, actually, before they went up, these recreation centers that we put up, uh, several years ago, is anybody ever using them? And if they are, how many of them are there? I mean, we can, we can take surveys, I asked for years for surveys, never could get a survey of, of a head count. We closed a library because nobody used it. Why are we going in without any information? Again, we're diving headfirst in the shallow end of the swimming pool with our eyes closed. We cannot continue to do this. We have to be out in front. If you had a game plan, I'm all for recreation, always has been, but not a repeat of these disastrous buildings that we've built before. Now, I understand the lease will probably be extremely minimal, maybe a buck a year, maybe it's free. Well, if it's a lease, it's got to be at least a buck a year, but we just don't go willy nilly getting, uh, land that we don't have a plan for. And you might say, well, we got a recreation center. What, one that hasn't, uh, uh, one that's typically has not worked so far? We're going to put money into that? We're going to maintain it? We're going to staff it? What are we going to do with it? We got to think ahead. We got to plan ahead. We just, just can't go willy nilly signing agreements, going off without doing any forethought and without informing the public and getting their input. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Uh, okay, thank you. And we're down to item seven, public hearing, A, in order to adopt a redistricting plan for Fairfield County, South Carolina, utilizing the twenty twenty U. S. Census results. So we want to open this, um, public hearing at six twenty. Do we have anybody to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Several persons signed up to speak. Yvette Howard.
Good evening, council, county employees. My name is Yvette Howard. I'm branch secretary for the Fairfield County branch of the N. A. C. P. We believe that the third reading of ordinance number seven eighty should be postponed because the public was not given an opportunity to provide input before coming up with the redistricting map. No matter what the procedure was in the past, this was not the appropriate procedure to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I cannot read the last name, Eugene Holmes, Eugene Holmes.
Good evening, council members and, uh, citizens of Fairfield County. Speaking on behalf of the N. W. A. C. P. here in Fairfield County, I'm second vice chair. We have been talking to citizens here in Fairfield County, and they are very, very opposed to the approval of this third and final reading. We respectfully request that you table this, not rush it through until March, the final day, deadline. We respectfully request that, that, that you show of hand, have a show of hands on your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley Murphy? Shirley Murphy? Jeff Schaefer?
Not Christmas yet, but I'm here. You can start the clock. I'm, I'm, you hear from people telling you not to go ahead and vote tonight. Don't do that. We, the people, the citizens of the citizens of Fairfield County, do not want you to do that. We want discussion. You need to hear from us what we think is right. And if we don't think is right, you have no right doing it. That being said, I don't know how you come up with changing the districts. What specifically made you change one street to another street? Last week, we had comments, or last time we were up here, we had comments of people saying that the black vote needs to be represented, the white vote needs to be represented. We all need to be represented. We're not. We're not. This is not equality for everyone. This is not even fair or right. What we have here is a map that was screwed up in twenty, in two thousand, probably in nineteen ninety. And none of you, none of you have taken the time to go, hey, we got a real problem here. Let's strip it, sit down and analyze what we should be doing for the future and do it right finally, the first time. That hasn't happened. You're allowing, you're pushing one mistake, one, every ten years, you're just repeating the mistake every ten years. You said last time, twenty eleven census. Who cares what happened in twenty eleven? Or twenty twenty-one? Or two thousand? They were all errors. The map, the districts are laid out wrong. The gentleman that was here last meeting told you so. Told us also. It's an error. If you vote on an error and you approved an error, what does that tell us? Okay. One last thing while I'm up here. Why haven't you put in the second conversation for the public to speak on anything we want to talk about? Why hasn't that happened? We've asked you several times and not. Next time I come up here, I don't care what's written down there. I'm going to tell you what I'm thinking. If you don't like it, you can call anybody you want. And until I'm finished talking, they're not going to remove me. I hope I made myself clear tonight.
Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright. Ridgeway, District One, for now. Been doing, been doing a lot of research. And if I was chairman, I've decided, here's what I would do to gerrymander in my self-interest. I would throw equity and equality out the window. I would throw, if I wanted to gerrymander in my self-interest, I would throw providing information, the data, the rationale, the reasoning behind the drawing of the redistricting. I'd throw that all out the window. Who needs an informed public? They're just going to get in the way of my self-interest. I would also not hold, according to protocol, district meetings to get citizens' input. I haven't seen any of those, but that's what I would do. And a key part of that, that way, I wouldn't have the input to ensure communities of interest stayed together. Because there's no way that anybody could know all the communities of interest without citizen input. I would ensure that I didn't get citizens' input because I don't care if they buy into the districting or not. I would rush through the process so I would not be under lengthy scrutiny and lengthy exposure of where I went wrong. That's a real key. I would also draw out potential candidates to me. I'd draw them out of that district or my district. I'd also draw in potential cronies into districts that I wanted to see current office holders removed. I would also rely as a base on the obviously extremely large map frontier districts, um, half districts, choice districts. Uh, you can think of the argument that they're possibly continuing, but not when they loop around. No, there's this map, not some kid drew this up there. That's putting, color putting up there and this is where it came out. Now, this map is drawn for Reese. That's what I would do if I was chairman and I want to gerrymander this crummy map, other crummy map that doesn't treat people equally with equity. I would, I see, time's up? Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So we end the public hearing is at six twenty-nine. From six o'clock to six twenty to six twenty-nine. We're down to item eight, ordinance resolution and orders. Item A. Third and final reading, orders number seven eighty, in order to adopt a redistricting plan for Fairfield County, South Carolina, utilizing the 2020 U.S. Census results.
Full move, Mr. Chairman, to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If we approve ordinance seven eighty. Any discussion? Mr. Gilbert.
What is about to happen tonight is there's going to be a vote from a few that will vote on a restricting map. What is about to happen tonight is that there are going to be a vote from a few that will vote on this restricting map and they do not understand it either. I am willing to bet, and I'm not a bad man, that much of the board do not know what they're voting on. If you ask them individually, they cannot explain the changes on the map. But if they can't explain, it proves that some of us were excluded from the process. The public was not given time or a fair chance to submit their input or recommendations for the changes. Let us remember, all changes will affect the citizens of Fairfield County and they deserve to be a part of the process. It was said that this was a significant improver, improver, improvement over the previous map, which is easy to see if you drew the map. I honestly cannot vote on these changes without further information on why these changes are the one that some feel is best for the citizens of Fairfield County.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Anybody else?
Mr. Bill.
All right.
I have done a lot of research on redistricting in the last month or so. And during this research, I was trying to learn more about the process and also prove to myself that the way Chairman Bill done this was correct. Unfortunately, this was not done correct and it is another one of Chairman Bill's failures. All the research I was able to find specifically states over and over again that public input is very valuable in this process. Chairman Bill has silenced these citizens in two ways. He's refusing to give them time to properly voice their opinions. There should have been numerous public hearings and all information relating to redistricting should have been given to the citizens in a timely manner to review. He's silencing council members who were elected by their constituents to be a voice for them also. Chairman Bill has only one thing in mind and that's doing what is best for Chairman Bill. He is drawing a citizen out of District One because he believes this citizen may run against him in an election. I heard he is trying to draw one into my district to run against me. Other counties I found, there were numerous public hearings, multiple maps proposed and these maps were proposed by all of council, not just one person. If you look at the screen, if Mr. Sparks can put it up here, this is straight from Mr. Rainwater's office. It states, who is responsible for redrawing the lines of the various electoral districts? If you'll go down and look at county council, it states, districts are drawn by the county council, not drawn by the chairman of county council. All council members should have input in drawing of the lines. Everything that occurred during redistricting was under the direction of Mr. Bill. He met with them and he told them how to draw the maps and how to draw the lines.
Thank you, Mr. Pauli. Any other, any other council members? Let me point out just a couple of things. The three consideration in development of the draft. The requirement of one person, one voter under equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Done. Voters' Right Act, done. Traditional redistricting principles completed. The deviation, the deviation range was reduced from fifteen point five four in the benchmark report to five point zero eight percent in the draft map. Traditional redistricting principles. Only fifteen census blocks of the twelve hundred and fifteen total blocks were shifted between districts and District Four was not changed. Last time in twenty eleven, the, the deviation was seven point three one. This time, the deviation is five point zero eight. Last time, and let me mention too that the, this, um, this map, what everyone is talking about been in place thirty or forty years. Thirty to forty years. And you have to look at constituents' consistency. Okay, so then, again, the deviation for this map is, for this proposed map is five point oh eight percent. Again, which is significantly improved from twenty eleven. No other discussion? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Five. All opposed, raise your hand. Two. So let the record show, five, two. Down to item B. First reading by title only. Ordinance number seven eighty-one, ordinance by Fairfield County Council to approve an internal government agreement between Fairfield County and the town of Ridgeway relating to code enforcement for certain town and county property ordinance. Since it's by title only, no discussion.
Full move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second. All in favors, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
So that, so that's five, two. Item C, first reading by title only. Ordinance number seven eighty-two, in order to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number five ninety-nine to provide for the zoning reclassification from a R one single-family residential district to RD one rural residential district. Again, no discussion by title only.
Full move?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show seven, zero. D, first reading by title only, number seven eighty-three. Orders to approve the lease of real property located in the North Monticello and Lad Road area by the county from Dominion Energy Company for the purpose of establishing a public recreation area.
Full move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second, since it's by title only, no discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
Let the record show five, two. Okay. Board and commission minutes. Um, you have that for information? Board and commission appointments, library commission. Do you want to, want to make the motion to appoint? That person is, is off of late.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Arthur Latham.
Okay.
Library.
All right, it's moved in second. All in favor, I mean, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Okay, all, all in favor. Okay, we're down now to any old business nun, county administrator, Mr. Whitaker.
All right. To the Fairfield County community government leaders, the Fairfield County government staff and the Fairfield citizens, good evening. And for those who I've not met yet, my name is Malik Whitaker and I'm your new county administrator here in Fairfield County. I'm really excited. Before I talk a little bit about this pre-budget workshop, I want to give a few shout-outs to folks that I've engaged in the community during my eight days and start with the citizens. I want to thank Ms. Barber for calling me to spell my wife's name correctly. She's a Stacy with a E-Y and not a Stacy with an I-R-Y and she's real sensitive, so I appreciate that. I want to thank Mr. Randy Bright for the public forum, the gentlemanly engagement with our attorney, Mr. Boykin over here. I thought it was a great exercise in democracy. I want to thank the citizens that I gave at, engaged at the scenic byway committee at the county museum. It was a really good opportunity to see some of the rich history of this community. I thought it was a great way to spend your first day. To the wonderful staff, the folks in IT, Mr. Marvin Allen, my friend Dwayne over here who embraced me on the very first day and the computer was up and running, so that was real important. I appreciate that. To Mr. Jason Pope and the, the wonderful volunteer firefighters that we have. They fed me, I had a really good pork chop and some good green beans and really good time listening to their concerns and, and engaging with them. So I really enjoyed that exchange. To the department heads who I had the opportunity to engage last week and explain my onboarding process, but also explain a little bit about myself and my history. We had a really wonderful time during that meeting. To, to our attorney, Mr. Boykin, who I consider wise counsel. He's also a Benedict man. My grandfather was a Benedict man, so it was really nice to engage and spend some time with him. To our community leaders, our community government leaders, Mr. Pauli, who called me on the first day to offer his support. To Ms. Green who stood with me at the Ridgeway Christmas Parade, I had a good time. To Mr. Roseborough, who I've had the opportunity to engage with the water treatment plant project. To Mr. Robinson, Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Trapp, who've all said, we're going to give you a few, few days to get yourself together and then we're going to talk. So I appreciate giving me space. And then our board chair, who engaged me in a lot of different, the community meeting, uh, meet and greet before I got here. The opportunity to engage at the farm, beautiful facility, southern hospitality, good food. Then the Molly Creek Park facility, which was breathtaking. I think every citizen should be aware and, and engage in going out to that beach and having a good time out there. And then, of course, coming to our first department meeting. So I just want to say, thank you for a wonderful first week. I'mma use the honeymoon period as long as I can, can have it. We're gonna, we're gonna enjoy that, the hospitality that I've been greeted with from this wonderful community. Only one item of business to, to discuss. Staff has requested and received approval to host a, what I call a pre-budget work session on January the tenth. And we're asking that, an extra hour after this meeting. And I want to just kind of read for any citizen who wants to know what, what the work session from the bylaws. Work sessions are meetings of the entire council designed to enable the council to focus on complex matters which, which would consume excessive time in regular meetings. And so we want to engage you in your priorities and your goals before we engage in the budget process. So this is an opportunity, we're going to create a forum where council has an opportunity and a work session to tell us what's important to you in the upcoming budget year. And so we're asking that we do that on January the tenth, immediately following the regularly scheduled board meeting. All right? You very much.
Thank you. Clerk to council report, none. County council time. Any council members?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to know if there's anything we can do, could we look into further? I know we voted on our poll workers, which we greatly appreciate each and every one of you because without you guys, no one can press the buttons. So can we just get a little further information? Maybe from my personal understanding, I'm not quite up to date on it with the said laws. Could we just get a, a real breakdown?
Okay, now, one of the things, we're gonna, we're gonna have some legal advice on this in executive session to make sure we talk about this and see what our plan is going forward. Is, is, is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
And, and, Mr. Pauli?
in the rescue funds, I would be happy to vote in favor of that once we receive legal advice. I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, hope everyone has a safe and great holiday season. I want to say as we end 2021, what did the Fairfield County Council accomplish this year? We got rid of an administrator, county attorney, a newspaper, a deputy administrator, tried six times to hire a county administrator, received a $99 million lawsuit that Mr. Bell involved himself in, and now a redistricting plan that is a failure. It's amazing how Chairman Bell's leadership has taken Fairfield County backwards in a short amount of time. Mr. Bell, please tell the citizens why you don't want them to be heard and put the second public comment section back on the agenda. I hope 2022 will be a great year, and that all council members will be working together for the betterment of Fairfield County.
Thank you, Mr. Pauling. Anyone else?
Yes. First of all, I'd certainly like to thank the poll workers. Can you hear me now? Okay. I'd like to thank the poll workers for all of the work that you have done for Fairfield County voters, and having been a part of your group for a while, I think it's very important to really say that we will do the best that we can for you. We understand the situation, we understand that there are some legal problems, and we're going to certainly look to try to solve those to make sure that those who worked in the municipal election at least are compensated. I also would like to say that, you know, a number of times I have simply said that it is better to show leadership than to show showmanship. I know that there's a lot of information that's floating about. I didn't see very many of the maps, the proposed maps, shown to the citizens so that they could really get a clear idea of exactly what is proposed, but those maps are here. And I think that while there's a lot of discussion and a lot of harangue and a lot of anger, the anger is basically about the process and not the product. So I think one of the things that we really have to look at when we take a look at the redistricting map and what it proposes is the product. We have seen the map, and I know everyone said, and I listened to you very carefully the last time you made statements, since it was drawn crazy the first time. And, you know, whether that's true or not, that's up to the citizens. But we want to make sure that when our election officials are taking a look at running elections, that everyone's not all over the place in terms of finding their precincts and voting in the precincts and all of those. So when we deviate a lot from that plan, basically people are all over the place, people are confused, and a lot of misinformation and other kinds of things happen during those times. So while it may not be the best that you're thinking of, I did not see one citizen or one group present any maps or an alternative. So I ask that we come together to work to make sure that essentially the proposed map and the things that are happening to benefit the citizens of Fairfield County happens in unison. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members? Let me begin by congratulating Ms. Roberts for receiving her doctor's degree. Ms. Green and our tenacity workshop, sponsored by Fairfield Forward Strive Together and Fairfield County School District, which we were all invited on Wednesday of last week. It included academia from University of Kentucky, University of South Carolina, and others. The data we reviewed was very sobering, along with the comments, but it speaks to the needs of our county, and if you see the data from the county, we will understand the flight of our citizens, especially in this last decade. We must improve. I want to publicly thank Dr. Green for his initiatives in improving our school system, significant improvements throughout the system. But we too must continue and begin the serious work of improving the quality of life for our citizens. Poverty, health issues, and housing have a serious impact in our communities. As a council, we must take on these initiatives. Our promise program will have a larger impact going forward. Hopefully, you've all seen the article in the state newspaper concerning the agreement between the University of South Carolina and Midland Tech. So let me read that to you. "A newly signed partnership between the University of South Carolina and Midland Tech pursuing degrees in engineering and science. Leaders from the two institutions announced a program allowing students to earn an associate degree from Midland Tech and move directly into the final two years of their undergraduate studies at the state flagship university in Columbia. More Midland Tech courses credits can transfer to USC for participating students to put them on track for on-time graduation with a bachelor's degree. The school also are working together to tweak Midland Tech's curriculum to better match what USC expects from transferring students. Students studying a dozen associate degree programs, including biology sciences, public health and exercise science, and engineering, would be guaranteed acceptance at the University of South Carolina once admission requirements are met. More courses may be added in the future, school leader says. The new direct transfer program removes a part of the higher education process that was a barrier for many of our students, Midland Tech president Ron Raines said. Raines said the courses targeted for inclusion in the program were selected because of their high-impact economic roles in the Columbia area and the entire state. So our work with Midland Tech will become more important as we move forward. In January, we'll do the groundbreaking of the Mount Martin Luther King Jr. Plaza. We'll also be working to provide some measure fund balance during our budget process in case of a true county emergency, giving the county the opportunity and resources to respond. We've had to contend with the most disastrous decision the county has ever made in creating an administration building from the old Mount Zion campus. While hurting our relationship to our constituents, we honor the county foolhardy, selfish, irresponsible contractual agreements. Although it has been a tedious journey, and next year as we go into the building, you will see how this council took lemons while many of them were just rotten and made lemonade. It was and is bitter to the taste, but this council did it because of our love for this county, and to not honor those contractual agreements regardless of how ill-advised they were would have caused damage to the county. Going forward, we have a lot of work ahead of us. My hope is that we truly engage and get it done with urgency and purpose. The last decade, we lost population, about 3,000. We must commit to lessening the reasons why our citizens choose to leave. As Barack Obama stated, yes, we can. Today, we met with home builders from across the state, a very productive meeting in an effort to help with housing and population, which is of the same cup. I believe we have a lot to offer, and we must engage the majority of our citizens who want growth, prosperity, and an improved quality of life far and from this great county. Chaos, disruption, name-calling for the purpose of just doing it does nothing to attract others to this county. So why is it being done? It is simple. It hinders growth, it hinders prosperity, and it hinders an improved quality of life. So you need to know why people are doing it. These acts of disruption are planned, designed to keep us from moving forward. We have committed. It will no longer work. However, our commitment to you, the citizens, for the next 10 years will be far better than the last 10, as it relates to real growth and prosperity in a county that believes and demonstrates her values and the total of citizenry. We are up to the challenge, as a matter of fact, we look forward to it. Theodore Roosevelt said, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who purports out how the strong man stumbles, or whether two of his deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood." With that, I want to thank council for your work and your work yet to come as we move forward. So I want to say Merry Christmas to all and a Happy New Year. Can we get a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are we going to executive session? Item A, legal advice regarding pending litigation involving road construction. B, legal advice regarding authorized suspending of American Rescue Plan funds for personnel and other lawful purposes. C, legal advice regarding status completion of the county administrative building project. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? We're now going to executive session at 6:54. We now go into executive session at six fifty-four.
Thank you.
So move Mr. Chair.
Second that we come out of executive session, no action taken in executive session? Any other discussion? All in favor of coming out of the executive session?
Aye.
Posits nay? So we out of executive session at eight twenty-two? Um, is anything left before council?
Motion to adjourn with adjourn.
Second.
It been moved and second that we adjourn? All in favor, ah, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posits nay?